Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you lead us, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody would please take a look at the minutes of 11:05:18. If there's no omissions, corrections, or errors, we'll entertain a motion when you guys are satisfied. Alderman will move to approve the minutes of 11:05:18. Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
We will start the evening with public hearing, and that is a code amendment to set lot setbacks on public right-of-way from 10 feet in a limited manufacturing district. Kathryn, when you're ready, would you read that into record, please?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a proposed amendment to Section 1703170I1 to set the minimum parking lot setback from the public right-of-way to 10 feet in the LM1 limited manufacturing district. Date of notice is October 17, 2018.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And this is a public hearing on a request to amend the Municipal Code, Chapter 17, with respect to the minimum parking lot setbacks in the LM1 limited manufacturing district. As a bit of history, this district, the LM1 district, was created last year. It kind of is a hybrid district to anticipate situations that are in between the M1 manufacturing district and some of our commercial districts. Things such as self-storage and more like office showroom type of things that aren't as intensive of manufacturing uses as the M1. And they have some resemblances to some of the characteristics more commonly found in our commercial zoning districts. When that code was created, it incorporated the parking lot setbacks of the manufacturing zoning district, which at that time were 40 feet and have since been reduced to 30 feet. As we get more practice with this zoning district, the LM1 district, it is more common to be found in areas which are adjacent to commercial or other zoning districts, which have smaller parking lot setbacks, in most cases 10 feet. So it really is, would have been out of character, so to speak, for to have a 30-foot setback for a parking lot next to a 10-foot setback. It just created some awkward situations. So the text amendment would reduce the minimum parking lot setbacks in the LM1 district to match those in the commercial zoning districts, which are 10 feet. So while this was brought to our attention primarily through a specific site example, it affects all the properties within the LM1, and there's not a lot of them. But I think it's the right thing to do. I think it really anticipates and recognizes that this kind of hybrid commercial manufacturing zoning district is really, in many cases, more like commercial than it is manufacturing. And even in cases where, for instance, it is adjacent to a more restrictive zoning district, such as a residential zoning district, there are still buffer yards that would apply. So with that brief explanation, I will note that this is a public hearing. I would request anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to reduce the minimum required front setback for parking in the LM1 zoning district to please fill out an appearance form. Once your name is called, please approach the podium, give your name, address, and proceed to address your comments and our questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. As Doug stated, we will make three calls. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Okay, we will now close the public hearing and move on to consideration of that ordinance recreating municipal code to reduce the setbacks. Comments, questions from commissioners? None? No? Okay, I'll just sum it up on planning. Doug spelled it out pretty well. It's really just an extension of that limited manufacturing. It's really just an update to our zoning code. Nothing very threatening here, and there was not much discussion of planning about it. If nothing else, motion, please.
You'll move to approve ordinance 2919 to repeal and recreate Section 17.03170I1 of the Municipal Code to reduce the minimum parking lot setback from 30 feet to 10 feet from the right-of-way of all public streets in the LM1 limited manufacturing district.
Guzekowski, you'll second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Item six is consideration of a motion for the 2019 combined common council dates. Commentary on this, we basically scope out the yearly calendar. We take into account when our employees will be taking holidays and what fits us best. So the alderman would take a look. I believe there were two meetings that will be regularly not scheduled, and they fall directly related to holidays. Take a look. Am I correct in that, Kathryn?
That's correct. The January meeting and then also the Fourth of July. Those two weeks are the two that are vacated.
Any questions and concerns with vacating those two dates, the way the holidays fall? Seeing none, motion.
Dukenyak moved to approve the 2019 regular combined common council meeting dates.
Alderman, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Item six is consideration of a resolution for a lease agreement with American Towers LLC, and we have Tom with us tonight. Welcome, Tom. I think it's your first time here.
It is. Good evening. In 2008, the city signed a lease with ATC for 25 years expiring in 2032. The lease started at $24,000 and increases 15% every five years. It's currently at $31,740 yearly. They approached us in order to extend their contract until 2063, giving us three different options. The first two options was a perpetual easement in the agreement. We found it mostly to be on behalf of our financial interests to extend it to 2063, but not keeping the perpetual and just increasing the current lease agreement. This would bring us to 2063, continuing the 15% increase every five years, getting a net profit of about $2.7 million.
Okay. Any questions for Tom concerning the lease agreement? And just for public knowledge, we are talking about the cell tower directly behind the street department, correct, Tom?
Correct.
Thank you. Alderman, anything? Tom, I guess I'll throw you a question.
Sure.
Since you know you came all the way here.
Can't go easy.
No, and again, I don't claim to be an IT guy or anything like that, but as technology is changing and they're talking about cellphone technology changing and possibly going to putting cell tower receivers on light posts and things of that nature, will we see cell towers go away and what happens with this agreement if technology outpaces the need to have the main towers? Or will it ever happen?
It's hard to say at this point because, as you said, technology changes so often. We are seeing and looking at the emergence of 5G coming out, which is going to be an increased footprint on the cell needs. You don't necessarily need a cell tower. There'd be a lot more building attendance at that point. So I think it's good if we extend this lease now in case that becomes an issue in the future where we don't need as many cell towers and more carriers going to building base mounts instead.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, if not, motion, please.
Dukenyak moved to approve Resolution Number 12008-112018, approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the lease agreement with American Towers LLC for the part of the property located at 800 West Pute's Road.
Alderman, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item number eight is the License Committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust that the members of the council had an opportunity to review the common council report regarding the License Committee. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing no questions, then Kirkowski will make a motion, or motion to adopt the License Committee recommendations as listed on the November 20, 2018 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item number nine is our vendor summary report, and as usual, we have Bridget here to take any questions, or Mike, or Andrew if needed. So please take a look. Are there any questions? If none, motion.
You'll move to approve the November 14, 2018 Vendor Summary Report in the combined total amount of $448,707.34.
Guzekowski, you'll second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lurk.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye. Before we go into consideration of a motion to convene into closed session, we have two residents asking to speak. I'd like to honor their requests and have them come up now before we convene into closed session. So John Belkey, would you like to come on up first, please?
John Belkey, 8506 South.
Tom, pick up the mic a little bit.
I'm not totally in the loop because I've been traveling and working a lot, so if I say something, correct me if I'm wrong. We're talking about possibly building Amazon on 13th Street. Is that correct, in that area?
And Ryan, the discussion is going to be for an agreement between Amazon and the City of Oak Creek on 13th and Ryan.
Would you all agree, and you, Mayor, that this affects the entire city and the people who are in it?
No, I think, well, every decision we cast up here affects the entire city, so...
Well, I have a concern about through this process, only residents 300 feet away from a project was given a notice. Why not people further up, like a half a mile or a mile, like myself?
Well, that is our standard ordinance because we... Doug, you want to go?
Yeah, thank you. That is the standard, the city's practice. Actually, a practice that is over and above that for most items is not required by state law. It's something the city does. In this case, even at the request of the alderman, I believe we extended it all the way south to include all the subdivision to Oakwood Road. So we even went beyond that with respect to the notifications for the Ryan Business Park.
But didn't it come north to where I was?
Again, they'd probably go in the radius. So I mean, I don't know how many feet you lie from the intersection of 13th and Ryan.
About a mile.
So...
But I take...
If that's 5,000 feet, again, I don't know what radius you took, but...
At the request of the alderman, we went south to include the subdivision. It would have been not typical to go more than a mile from the, any such request. I think that's probably more than is probably appropriate, given the circumstances. I think that with respect to the press, and well, certainly no names were mentioned, and yes, so we won't mention names until the council considers it in closed session. But it was something that did receive considerable discussion throughout the, you know, throughout the local press and throughout the Plan Commission agendas. And I think to the extent that what you're discussing this evening is a development agreement, it's not necessarily the plans for the park, the rezoning, the site plans, and those have already been duly approved through a process with the Plan Commission.
But to kind of get back to your original question, why we don't go citywide, because we have to have a cutoff point. So for example, they're putting in a subdivision behind you in addition onto Glen Crossing. Well, we really wouldn't notify anybody that's living in Normandy Estates that that's going in because it's really not that affecting them. So there is a standard cutoff that we have in ordinance as to who we have to, by ordinance, notify what's going on.
Well, can the ordinance be re-looked at? Because people north come south to get on the freeway or 27th Street. And that's going, if something like this goes up with all the trucking, there's going to be some changes done in that intersection, correct?
At Ryan Road?
Yeah, and that will affect these people here.
Most certainly.
So these people should have been notified, don't you think?
Well, it depends. Again, we go within a certain amount of feet. So if they went within 300 to 500 feet north, if they did at the alderman's request, it doesn't sound like it went north. But if it would have, it would have affected some fringe homes there, but mostly the businesses going forward.
All right.
So I mean...
I don't agree with that at all, but...
I know, but if we go citywide, it would be terribly, I guess, inefficient because all these notices, okay, even if it's, even if you're not within 300 feet, the agendas are posted online. Everything is out there. I get it.
Come on, Dan. Who goes online all the time? There's people all using computers.
Again, but who reads their mail all the time, too? If you get a letter from the city, a lot of it goes right in the file bin. It's a circle.
All right.
You know, so...
All right. It is what it is. Why are you guys convening? What's that all about? Why are you guys convening?
Legally, the answer is it's an agreement, and we, why are we convening in closed session to discuss the agreement? So give me the legal answer.
I mean, generally speaking, if there's an agreement under consideration, the council has the legal authority to go into closed session to discuss the terms. Sometimes it's a situation where it might be a term sheet or some conditions that still need to be negotiated. And before we come to final discussion about those terms and conditions of any type of agreement or a contract, for example, there is that option in a lot of circumstances to do that. I think here, having comments, as the mayor indicated, from the public, to take those into consideration or to hear those from citizens like yourself before they have that discussion is something that the mayor chose to do tonight.
That's a lot of legal talk there. Do you tell us what's said behind closed doors there?
Once we come back out, discussion, if council decides to, they can discuss it, if they decide to, on the commentary. But beforehand, before they make a decision, they'll go in there.
You know how that looks, though? You know how that looks, when you go behind and come back out?
But it's nothing new. We, as you've heard, we do it standardly.
It doesn't look good, though.
We do it standardly.
I know, but it doesn't look good, though.
No. I disagree. You know, I mean, if it was, if you're the property owner and you're doing the deal, that's your private business until it's approved and done. So I mean, you don't have to air that out publicly.
But if you're going to be able to tell us what was said, we should know what was said, right? With the, if it's a kind of agreement here?
The discussion can happen when we come back out, John.
All right. I just do what you got to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, Arden.
Arden Diggner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I agree with the previous speaker in regard to the traffic problem and as presented to the Joint Review Board, a outline of the TIFF 16, I believe what is District, showing the construction or at Elm Road of the eastern leg of the interchange up to Oakwood Road, down 13th Street, and continuing as a truck route all the way to Highway 32, although a part of that is already a truck route. This, to me, is necessary to afford access by the residents to the interstate because, as we already know, there are at least two or three different trucking companies accessing the Ryan Road. With another one, can't we consider constructing the TIFF district outlines as presented to the Joint Review Board? Thank you.
Thank you, Arden. Does anybody want to tackle that? Apparently, he'd like the TIFF extend it to Elm, to put the extension in from Elm to 13th. Did I understand that correctly? Arden? Did I say that correctly? You're hoping to, your question is, we should extend the TIFF all the way to Elm to get that extension from the proposed Elm Road intersection?
And then writing on route to Highway 32.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I can shed a little bit of light on Mr. Diggner's comments, and he's made similar comments in the past. The boundary does not go south of, does not go south to Elm Road. There, this is not even within a half mile of Elm Road as prescribed by state statute. You can make infrastructure improvements out to a half mile outside the district. It would require extension of the district. What Mr. Diggner is referring to is the reconstruction of the interchange and the construction of the Elm Road interchange and kind of a, while it's full service, it's only going east, I'm sorry, west to 27th Street. There's no eastern leg to 13th Street. And while that's something certainly the city will consider in the future as part of a much larger planning effort, I think it would be difficult and challenging to kind of look at that within the blinders of just this project without examining the potential other impacts that are associated with that. And as such, would be more properly discussed at a future date.
Anything to add, Andrew? Nothing? Okay. Last speaker, please. And I would probably kill your name, so...
My name is Yadranka Vilangia, and I live at 1050 West Dover Drive, which is the English Erie subdivision.
Yes.
So my backyard is facing the construction place. Okay. You people turn our lives upside down completely. We have nightmares right now. So 14 alarm clocks, 6:00 in the morning, they go off until 10:00 at night, and they turn on the lights at 5:00 PM. So they're shining in our bedrooms. It's just horrible. But my question is, how can we get tax relief while this construction is on? Because we, right now, we're in pain and suffering for City of Oak Creek, our subdivision. And I don't know who approved this. Did you approve or county or, I don't know? To close the Oakwood, work on Ryan, on Drexel, on Pute's, and close the 13th Street. That's the only way we can go out of our subdivision. We never know when to leave the house to be on time. Our cars are getting damaged because of the trucks and the rocks flying around, and 17 years old driving with these trucks is also nightmare. So is there any way that we can start a process, even legal process with the city, to get a tax relief, that we don't pay property taxes while the construction is on?
Well, I'm not a legal expert, but I think that would be pretty hard to pull off.
I mean, nobody, I think no one went through what we're going through right now. No one. You have to see the 50 trucks in my backyard.
I understand. I understand you're very upset. First, let's talk about some of the road construction. Oakwood Road is being closed due to the state on the bridge, so...
It's still, it was our way to 27.
I understand that, but that's a state issue. Am I correct with that? Okay. The Ryan Road intersection is being redone because of state once again doing the bridge. Okay? Construction will continue as you improve the roads and you grow infrastructure, without a doubt. 13th is a county road. It's going to continue to be improved. Okay? So you're going to have that road construction regardless of what goes on with this facility. As far as, as far as the lights go, starting times and things like that, we can work with them on that. Okay?
Please.
That we can do. As far as you not paying property taxes, I don't believe we have any legal recourse due to your inconvenience to suspend your property tax. If I'm not, please correct me.
Anybody? Help me here.
Honestly, and again, I understand your...
How is that fair? I mean, why don't we ask Amazon? Maybe they'll pay for us, for all that they're doing right now.
Again, we've had very large projects that have inconveniences other neighborhoods as well. And I believe you are being very much inconvenienced, but believe me, it's happened in other areas of the city, too. It's happened on the lakefront. They had multiple trucks bringing multiple truckloads of dirt from the Mitchell Interchange for months at a time down there. And again, it did get managed, it did get worked out for greater benefit of the city. So that's one example. When we did the interchange at Drexel Avenue, that was another great inconvenience to a lot of people, as well as when we...
Inconvenience is different than pain. This is painful. We, I can sleep, I can hear it in my sleep. Beep, beep, beep. Like, okay, you get home from work and all you hear is like, beep, beep, beep. This is horrible. You don't, you don't understand people. You have to come to my house and spend the day.
I've been on construction sites. I know, those are safety warnings. I mean, we want nobody hurt on there. And again, by OSHA, you cannot disconnect them. They need the backup alarms.
Right.
And everything they do.
Right, I know.
And again...
You have to think of everybody else.
And again, there's massive excavation going on there. You're going to have that going on for a while. I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but I'm being honest.
So what about the damage to our cars? Or what about our health? What if we get an accident because I couldn't sleep because of them or something? So nothing, you people don't feel any consequences of your decisions? So you cannot feel anything?
I, you know...
No, seriously. Do you...
I get it, that's a very broad question. It very much is. But once again, when you drive your car, your safety is also your responsibility, correct?
Of course, yes, it is.
Right, so if you're not properly rested?
But you know what? You brought these people over there. So when I bought the house, nobody knew we existed. And now we live in the middle of Oak Creek Business Park, surrounded with businesses and construction. I mean, something will happen, for sure. Okay.
Well, realistically, it was going to develop, whether now or in the future.
Oh, not Amazon. You found the biggest company in the world and brought it to our backyard. So no one had this, no one.
Whether it was them or not, it was still the same amount of acreage. So you were, whether that was cut in eight pieces or three or four big ones, it was going to, it was going to develop. And that earth was going to be moved for stormwater management and what have you.
No, Amazon is too needy. You have to just agree with them, that they're just too big.
I can't, I can't comment on that, Mayor. I know, you're entitled to your opinions.
You're also secretive, too. That's, you keep a lot of secrets from us. So we supposed to know this like a long time ago. Maybe you would have more people here, but that's okay now. My second question is to developer. So they promised nine years ago, the barrier between our yards and their property, nine years ago, when you changed to agriculture, to commercial, or I don't know. Mr. Mark, who is, he was talking about it. You know the berm between our property and their property?
The berm?
Yeah.
Wasn't that connected with the development that did not happen?
Mayor, I can answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The business park developer, Mr. Mike Faber, is not here. He's out of the country. He would have loved to have been here, but we've had some delays in getting this final action in front of the council. I have heard Mike probably no less than four times in the last six months, you know, tell these immediate residents to the south that the intention is to build the berm. This is the far southernmost property that's immediately adjacent to the English Erie subdivision and actually backs up to the subdivision. All indications are, and he will follow through with that. I think he's been committing to that for 10 years as soon as some activity starts.
That's what I'm talking about. Right now, we would have a tall trees between us. So they just promise, promise, and do nothing. So I would like to know when that's going to be built, so that we know how many trees we can build in our properties then, to see how high it's going to go, so that we can plant the fence or something in our backyards. So what happened to my husband? So we, I went to buy trees, nine trees, so that I can see the Amazon, and he broke his arm at a surgery. That's what happened. That's what happened. And that's actually... That's your fault.
That's very unfortunate.
I would never go and buy seven trees, so...
That is very unfortunate. But again, you know, it was your choice to put the trees in your yard.
I know. I am not legally accusing you. I'm just saying.
Okay. Well, I kind of took it that way. So again, as far as the berm goes, and I'm not going to speak for Mr. Faber, but if I was in Mr. Faber's position, okay, I would put that berm in when it's appropriate and the stormwater management plan and the grading plans in place and you know what's going in there. To do it beforehand may only cause it to be redone or redesigned.
And it would help us.
Again...
Can you request something in our favor?
I'm sure he'll get it done, and when he's here, he can state the fact of when he plans to do it, now that he actually has development going on in the property he's combined. But to do it before that would have been probably not a really good choice on his part, at least that would be my guess.
And he promised the highest one possible.
And that, again, as we get into it, our engineering department helps out on that when it comes to the grades and the water management, and the berm's plan to that. And again, we do want to protect you as best we can. I know you don't...
Very hard to believe.
I know you don't believe that, but again...
How could... How can I?
It's all I can offer you tonight.
Okay. Can you request as many trees or how tall they... Can you ask for that at least, so that we don't wait 15 years?
Our forester will go through that, and again, we'll try to make the greatest impact we can right off the get-go. Again, that berm is determined by the amount of land, the height, because there's a slope to it, and where the water is going to run. Don't want to cause issues of anything. We want to eliminate issues of water control, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else before item 10, we make a motion convenant to close session? Okay. With that, we will now consider a motion convenant to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 19.85, parent one, parent E to consider a proposed tax increment district number 16 city tenant agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Amazon Com D E D C LLC for the property located at 7900 South 13th Street. Common Council, President Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. A move to convenant to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub one, sub E to consider a proposed tax incremental district number 16 city/tenant agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and amazon.com/decllc for the property located at 9700 South 13th Street.
Guzakowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management best practice maintenance agreement with Commerce 94 Project LLC for the development located at 9700 South 13th. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This agreement is for the establishment of the responsibilities on the property owner in their development to maintain the stormwater management facilities for the property. It is an extensive property, and there is a storm sewer to facilitate the drainage, and there are three large retention ponds as part of this overall stormwater management plan. So this agreement basically solidifies their responsibility to maintain these facilities, and if they don't, the city can step in and have that done and bill them the costs of that effort.
Right. Thank you. Questions for Mike? No? Seeing none? Motion on 12.
A move to approve Resolution 12004-112018, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Commerce 94 Project LLC for the development located at 9700 South 13th Street.
Guzakowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Item 13 is consideration of a resolution approving a development agreement for the design installation and public improvements for the development located at 9700 South 13th Street. Mike?
And this agreement is for the public infrastructure that will be constructed across the site to serve the building. And this includes sanitary sewer, both public and what is termed a private interceptor sewer. That's part of this agreement because that still needs to be constructed to MMSD and public standards, and also a public water main, and of course, the stormwater facilities that we mentioned earlier. So this agreement just outlines that these facilities will be constructed to city standards and MMSD standards, and will be in compliance with the DNR, and will also be subject to inspection as they are constructed by city staff.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? Seeing none? Motion on 13.
A move to approve Resolution 12005-112018, approving the development agreement for the design installation and public improvements for the development located at 9700 South 13th Street.
Guzakowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Niack.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 14 is consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a tax increment district number 16 city tenant agreement between the City of Oak Creek and We'll open it up for the council. Questions, comments? Chris?
Sir. Alderman Guzekowski, 6th District. First of all, I want to thank and appreciate Mike Faber for his efforts for bringing the Ryan Road Business Park to fruition. This has been a long and delicate process for him, so thank you for him and his team for this work. I also want to thank our city staff for working on this and the complexities of the project of Project Arrow. Hands down, our city staff are the best. My ongoing concern for this project, for Project Arrow, is still the traffic flow onto 13th Street and in general, the entire park, the entire part of the city. I did vote in favor of the rezoning of this property. As we moved through the large and small user plans, I was also on board, as long as the impact of 13th Street was going to be minimal. As a large user plan evolved, it became apparent that the concerns would not be able to be met. The... I had requested a traffic to... I had requested this traffic to be funneled north to Ryan Road. As the TIA Traffic Impact Analysis completed, we are now seeing just how many changes are going to take place in this area. As my record shows, I do support, and I am for and about business, but tonight, for me, it's bittersweet. For me, and for the residents of the 6th District, we have to remember that as this work, if this continues to move forward, right now, they're landlocked. Ryan Road has work being done that'll be finished up in... At the end of the year, but Oakwood Road, they can't go east or west really because of the bridge, seven miles. So as if this moves forward and the TIA work has to happen here, we have to be mindful of when we start doing that work. Please note that prior to moving into the roadwork, I respectfully ask that you keep in mind the current roadwork as I just noted. This is a three to four generation, generation year old farm with the business park approved and now a Project Arrow potentially moving forward. This is a huge change for this area, so it's something that is going to be different, something different for everybody to see. So we have to take... Keep that in mind as we're moving forward, because again, the owners wanted to sell, and they're on board, but we also remember that there's a lot of other citizens that are impacted here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments, questions from the aldermen? If not, I'll invite our... Oh, Steve?
Mine is at the end because we haven't resolved the matter yet. That makes...
Andrew, would you like to comment?
Sure. Yeah, I can... I know there's a lot of interested folks in the audience, interested folks at home, and just generally interested public here with this large economic development deal here before us. And again, as Alderman Guzekowski mentioned, really changing an area. So what I'd like to do is provide some, you know, some thank yous for the stakeholders and the partners that were a part of this project. It was a lot of work this past four months or so. And then after that, I would like to give some high-level deal points, the financials, the economics of this deal, just so there's no mistake. It's rather complex with various parties involved in the city in agreements, working agreements with three different entities. So I want to explain that just so for the media out there, there's no guesswork in the end. Just as Alderman Guzekowski mentioned, a big thanks goes to Mike Faber, who has been at this assembly, trying to assemble this business park for a long time. I think Chris summed it up really nicely. You know, this is... It's a delicate thing when folks are turning over their, you know, land that's been in their family for many generations to a new use and kind of moving on. That's a big step for folks. So just the sheer complexity, you know, Mike, his team, Michael Weiss and Linda Gorins Lovey, really were awesome to work with. So I wish Mike could be here tonight. As a part of that land complexity as well, we have to thank Milwaukee County. If we council recalls, going back to the beginning of this, maybe a business park, the only thing, or the one critical thing, was to work with, in partnership with the county, particularly the Parks Department, but definitely with the guiding hand of County Executive Abely. There was a large swath of county land that ran down the exact middle of this development, this business park, the Ryan Business Park. Without the city and the county coming together to solve for that piece, we would never be able to have a cohesive business park in this area. In this area, despite the, you know, the concerns and the perspectives, which are completely valid of those folks in the area, this is... From a land use perspective, is a perfect spot, given the infrastructure and proximity of the interstate for a business park. Again, quick thanks to Hillwood Development. Hillwood, Greg Skovitch is in the audience. Hillwood is the site developer and what is ultimately will be the landlord for Amazon. Greg will... Greg and I will, and our engineering staff and Greg, will be working together closely the next several months as construction goes forward. So thank you, Greg, for your work. Also, thank you to Jim Pace with M7, who's also in the audience. This was very complex. There were a lot of stakeholders, and Jim really helped corral and keep everybody in the loop on a number of details. So thank you, Jim, for your guiding hand here. The state and county highway department, state DOT and the county highway department, coming together to solve for what, as you'll see, and I'll mention a little bit later, solving to make sure that the capacity, the infrastructure capacity on 13th Street and Ryan Road are such that the area residents and the general traveling public do not see congestion here. When we get into those deal points, you will see there is a significant investment in infrastructure based on the recommendations in the TIA of all of those entities, including the city. We did commit, as a council in our previous development agreements, to whatever, to build and have the developer build to whatever that TIA said to make sure that traffic worked in that area. So I want to thank the mayor and common council very quickly, and I think tonight was a perfect example of how you respectfully disagree, and I wish the federal government and other governments would take a, you know, take a page out of the book of some local governments who really know how to do that. So that's exactly how you do that, Alderman Guzekowski. I'll thank Amazon and Representative Ryan Wilson a little bit later, but he's in attendance as well. So shifting gears to the deal points, again, just to eliminate any guesswork for folks who don't necessarily work with tax increment too often or the media in the audience. The city has a development agreement with three entities. If this is ratified this evening, it'll be three entities. We have a development agreement with the city and the business park developer, Mike Faber, as I mentioned, in Capstone Quadrangle, Ryan Business Park LLC. We have a development agreement with Hillwood, the site developer/landlord, and then this final development agreement is between the city and the tenant, which is Amazon. So in the... This is the totality. I know there was reports as coming in as the previous two development agreements were coming online, so this is the totality of the deal as it sits today. The city will be providing a forgivable loan of $2.84 million to the business park developer. That is the total sum of monies the city is going to borrow for this entire project, 2.84 million, for development of the park property itself, to be able to turn the property over to Hillwood and Amazon. So that is the city and business park development agreement. The city and the development agreement between the city and Hillwood calls for up to... Up to $13.4 million of infrastructure, general infrastructure costs. That is a significant number, and why is that a significant number? Because of the capacity that is going to be required and that the developer will build into 13th Street and Ryan Road predominantly. There's also an ingress/egress road to the development off of Ryan Road, but the majority of those costs are for doing exactly what we had hoped the developer would commit to, which they did, and that's making sure that there's not congestion, given this, not only this large user, Amazon, but also the business park. There's more land to be developed in there. So we are really, you know, maybe doing a belt and suspenders on the capacity we're building into these roadways. In addition to the $13.4 million, the city would reimburse up to 3.4 million, or excuse me, 3.5 million for onsite costs, large mass grading, stormwater, that type of thing. It's really important to note that the city is not borrowing any money for the Hillwood City Development Agreement. This is funded through a tax increment financing district. Again, very important to the public out there. We try to explain tax increment financing and how it works. The monies that I had spoken of will be 100% paid for by the tax increment district or the tax increment revenue, taxes paid for by this development site and only this development site, not the general taxpayers of the city, not you and me. That makes me happy as well. And again, this is a reimbursement model or a pay-as-you-go model. Okay? So the city is not borrowing any money for those infrastructure costs in the Hillwood agreement. Hillwood is funding those monies, and the city will reimburse Hillwood for those costs with the property taxes from the project itself. Okay? So switching gears now to the city and the Amazon development agreement. The key deal points are... The true financial outlook is exactly what I just mentioned with the business park developer and the Hillwood development agreement. The city and Amazon are talking about all of the great things that the company, Amazon, is bringing to this community, and those deal points include a $200 million investment in real property and personal property. $100 million in real property, i.e. the property in the structure, and $100 million of really cool technology inside of the building. Secondly, the Amazon is committing to 1,500 full-time jobs by the end of 2020. I know it was previously reported a little bit lower than that. It's actually 1,500 jobs. Along with those jobs, Amazon has committed to an annual gross wage, annual gross wages being paid of $40 million. So an incredible investment in our community, and we couldn't be happier to, you know, to welcome them to the newly minted Ryan Business Park. So... But for that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, and then hopefully, we can hear a little bit from Ryan before we decide on the matter this evening.
Well, excellent. Again, I'd like to welcome you to Oak Creek. We are very proud to have you. to have you and count you among us. That is great at this time. Love to invite Ryan Wilson of Amazon up for a few comments. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, council members, for the consideration today. This has been a long project, a year-long search for the right site, a site that can meet our timelines, meet our needs from a workforce standpoint, infrastructure standpoint, and then also a city that can partner with us to make this happen. We move incredibly fast, and Andrew and his team has exceeded those expectations in making sure that we can launch on time. So thank you all for your consideration, like Andrew said, and summarized very well, better than I probably could, 1,500 new jobs, $200 million in investment. One of the things I want to call out about those 1,500, those are all full-time jobs. That does not, there will be some part-time components to this, but that is 1,500 full-time jobs, making a minimum of $15 an hour. With that comes full-time benefits as well, and they're the exact same benefits that corporate employees that I get out in Seattle. So these people are getting healthcare, retirement benefits, and all the benefission, life insurance, all those same benefits that us corporate employees get. We also have our career choice program. We're actually prepay up to $3,000 in college tuition for our associates, so they can go and develop new skills, get new certifications, get new degrees. There'll actually be a classroom onsite in our building where people can actually learn those new skills. For example, maybe get their CDL license, become a machinist. And so we're incredibly excited to be here, incredibly excited for our second large fulfillment center location here in the state of Wisconsin. Certainly appreciate the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's work, the cities, the county has been instrumental in all this, and of course, M7 with Jim has been really the quarterback in herding all the cats that make these deals a reality. So thank you for your consideration and the time that's gone into this, and happy to answer any questions and help address any concerns you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Wilson? Steve, anything?
It's not, it's not for Mr. Wilson, but I just simply wanted to say that the thing that's, I heard, was it was a year-long search for the right place, and once again, they picked Oak Creek. I mean, IKEA came here. I mean, we've just got to, and Andrew works very hard to put all this stuff together. We've had, we got developments from the state, the county, private. I mean, there's road construction, there's housing going up, there's apartments. I mean, this is just a great, it's a great city, and a lot of people are sorry to see the small-town city go, but that's what happens with development and how cities survive. And, you know, we, for those that are bothered with the, with the construction and stuff like that, just like I have to do every day, I have to use patience out on the street, I have to adapt to a different route, and I have to use, I have to have courtesy out there because it's, sometimes it's a rough goal, but we're making it work. And when developers have issues with the residents, residents come forward and they work it out, which is, this is remarkable. I, and I don't see any difference with Amazon. I mean, I, this is just a phenomenal time for the city. I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a brief commentary. Finally, as we've gone through this process for these past few months, and now Amazon is in print here and formerly, formerly known to the world here in Oak Creek, obviously, your firm will become our largest employer, more likely our largest taxpayer, and we're very appreciative of your consideration of our, of our community. Obviously, your firm's reacting to the evolving retailing world out there and the distribution model that's growing here, and we really appreciate the fact that we're going to be able to bring business park to your company, that's going to be able to serve, you know, it's going to serve as an economic engine, not only to Oak Creek, but Franklin, Southeastern Wisconsin, entire region. So we're very happy to be kind of in that, in that realm of being considered for that kind of investment, and it is obviously a monumental investment on your company's behalf, so we really do appreciate that. You know, reflecting a little bit on how this process kind of evolved, you know, Mike, I think Andrew a couple, it's probably been two years since Mike came to us with his last iteration of his, of a business park, as he had kind of got finally to some of the family lands and the county lands in kind of a consolidation mode. And at that point, it looked like a very traditional city-funded, multi-user, kind of Oak View Business Park kind of successor, kind of, kind of business park, you know, was going to serve as our inventory for, you know, after Oak View filled up for 10, 15 years moving forward, and then things evolved, things changed, and a large user format became a possibility, and now, obviously, in a format that is much more city-friendly in terms of its pay-go model, we mitigated the risk to the citizenry of the community, and also have obviously set the table for a company coming here and changing the landscape, essentially in one fell swoop. So I want to give credit, obviously, to Mike Faber. Mike was one of the first folks I met when I was elected almost 10 years ago. I know he's been, he's been a very patient and had exhibited a great amount of perseverance here to kind of bring this project to its fruition, assembled all this land, dealt with the county, is sometimes difficult as that can be, dealt with the DNR wetlands issues there, the families, as I mentioned, the Keilers, the Dishon Doris families, others that are involved, WEDC, M7 Organization, Hillwood, Amazon. So it has been a truly kind of really substantial effort on his part, you know, bringing his partner with Michael Weiss and Linda Gorins Levy, really has been a remarkable kind of evolution here, and really, giving all the credit from not only developer standpoint, but bringing it on to, the city staff has really proven once again, they are the best in the business here in this part of the world. As Steve had said, given the IKEA kind of project, and this project here in the timeframes that were demanded of the city, I think they showed once again why we hold them in such high regard. From Melissa Carles on the legal side, like Seymour and his team in community development, Bridget and your finance folks, Andrew and all the administration folks, and as well, all my colleagues on the elected side of it, to really take the time and the consideration, to look at the impacts and implications, and what is your heart and your brain tells you how to do it and how it's going to impact the city. So I believe it's a great day for Oak Creek. Congratulations. Good luck to you guys.
Ken? Mike, anything? Rich? Anything? Greg? Okay, I guess I'll close it off real quickly. All the thank yous have been done. I don't want to be repetitive. Again, Amazon, welcome. We're glad you're here. My message is really going to go out to our constituents. This council, our staff has worked diligently hard to help make Oak Creek a great place to be. We are blessed with a great location on an interstate. We sit on a lake, we have railways, we're close to the airport. It is an unbelievable place we are blessed with. And the council's before us, mayor's before us, everybody's set the plate that leads up to this, and it becomes preparation meeting opportunity. And then it comes down to our staff to put it together. And it's been mentioned, and I can't say this enough, from our admin staff to our clerk, to our city attorneys, right on down to planning, zoning, and everybody connected, these are the people that make this stuff happen. They're the best in the business. That's why the city's in as well a shape as it is. This deal is very rare and unique. Can't emphasize that enough. These come by once in a lifetime for a city like us. And again, we have to be prepared to take advantage of it, and due to the hard work of the people that represent you, the people that work for you, they made this happen. And again, we look forward to a long fruitful partnership with Amazon, Hillwood, and everybody involved in this. This is going to benefit the county, MATC, MMSD, not only the City of Oak Creek, but the state. This is a win-win for everybody. This was a public-private partnership coming together, and I know it's very painful for those that are closest to the project. And I understand, you know, you think we're maybe just rubber stamping it and putting it through, and money's the deciding factor. This is really setting the table for future generations in Oak Creek, long after I'm gone. And I want to applaud the leadership up here, because it's not easy having to deal with all these issues, because it's impossible to please everybody. But again, you have to lead for the greater good of all. So again, I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to welcome Amazon. And again, it is great that they are here, and we can have another Fortune 500 within our borders. It is just remarkable. So Andrew, thank you for your hard work. I think everybody got thanked but you. And, you know, it's, I know it's part of your job, but this is a big deal. Congratulations to you. So if nobody has anything else, motion on 14, please.
It will move to a Resolution 12006-112018, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a tax incremental district number 16 city/tenant agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and amazon.com D E D C LLC.
Kirkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Thank you, and again, welcome. And we wish you a very happy Thanksgiving going forward. Before we adjourn, and speaking of Thanksgiving, please join us at Emerald Preserve Thanksgiving morning as we have another turkey trek. We ask that you bring a non-perishable food item that will be donated to a local food pantry. We kick off at 9:00 AM, I believe?
8:00.
8:00 AM. Thank God I'd have been late for that one. But anyways, 8:00 AM, we're hoping to grow this. Please come spend some time. Before you go eat the big dinner, take a couple laps around to Preserve and help those out that are less fortunate. Remember to give thanks for all you've been blessed with. So with that, adjournment, please.
Kelski will make a motion to adjourn.
Lorick will second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duke Neak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Thank you all very much, and good night.